...the market or increasing the costs of goods and services. So overall, you know, having a real impact even on those who are stably housed. So that's sort of the why. The what, as you can see from the agenda, you know, we have everything. We really wanted to bring together a broad coalition of perspectives. So we've got Andrew Gottlieb from the Association of Preserve Cape Cod talking about the relationship between our wastewater, which, you know, Yarmouth is moving forward on, and how we can zone appropriately and create some economies of scale around that. You know, we've got someone from Island Housing Trust talking about how you can use your open space, you can use your CPC money for open space preservation and density for affordable housing. So there's a whole plethora of perspectives that I think you'll find really valuable and informative. Kathy's already registered, and we very much appreciate it.
No?
No?
Did I accidentally register?
Yeah.
I might have. I'll have to check.
But we would appreciate to have as many of you as are able to make it. And we would also be happy to follow up. We're going to be having follow-up trainings that go a little bit more in-depth on issues like form-based code and other issues that are, that address our need for both economic development, natural housing affordability, as well as sort of the aesthetic of our community character. So we hope that you'll attend. Information on registration is at the bottom. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, I thank you for your time.
Any questions from the board?
No question, but I participated in the training for the last two years, and I would recommend to any of our board members, if you have the time, go, because this is, this is, this is good information. We, we, we need to have more exposure of this.
Thank you very much. And I would also say that if time is an issue for you, you know, we can work, you know, you can always attend for half the day or something like that. You know, you don't feel like you have to go for the entire day. But, yeah, and we've added even more information, so even if you've attended the past couple of years, you're going to find a lot of new information in this one, too.
Off the top of your head, can you tell me what day November 15th is?
Friday.
It's a Friday?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, we'll get on to the public hearing at this particular time. Kathy, you want to read the notice?
The Planning Board will hold their public hearing on Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, at 5:30 PM in the hearing room at the Town Hall offices to look at proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw, to amend the zoning map, to rezone four parcels along or adjacent to Route 28, amend Section 303 signs to provide a mechanism to allow for special event signs for temporary outdoor recreation held on town-owned property, and add a third community information board. Copies of all of this information has been available at the Planning Department and is also available on our town website, as well as giving my email address for people who wanted to write in comments, and we did receive one comment, written comment.
Okay, there's a sign-in sheet, just that end chair there. I hope everyone would sign.
I gave mine away.
Oh, you did? Okay. Do you want to go over the amendments?
Yes. For people who don't know me, I'm Kathy Williams. I'm the town planner. I'm just going to give a brief presentation of the two zoning amendments that the Planning Board is proposing for a special town meeting, which is to be held on October 29th at 7:00 PM at Matta Key's Middle School. I think I'm too far away.
Do you want me to stand up there and hit the button?
Yeah, I guess I'll do it for you.
Kathy, I'll do it for you.
I think you're doing it too.
I tried to get brownie points, I can't.
There you go.
I don't know. I have no idea. I have no idea. Don't touch it. No, I can do it. Don't touch it. All right. We're back in action now. Okay, this is just identifying the different Yarmouth Planning Board members that are represented here today. They're all here except for, unfortunately, Joanne Crowley, who is our new Vice Chairman, couldn't make it this evening. Special Town Meeting, Article Number Four, is a zoning map amendments, and the purpose of this was to rezone four properties along or near Route 28 to make the underlying zoning consistent. What that does is it makes it much easier for people to permit and redevelop their properties, because each zoning district has different requirements and different setbacks, and having it all the same makes it a little bit easier. The four properties are related to the Captain Parker's Restaurant is one of them, and then three parcels inter-adjacent to Great Island Plaza. You can look on a little map here, it might be a little bit difficult to see, but it's showing, right here is Captain Parker's, and this is the Parker's River Bridge, this is Route 28, Winslow Gray Road here is here, and South Sea is here. For some reason, there's a little odd anomaly in the Captain Parker's property that has a little square of R-25 residential zoning. We're just hoping to rezone that to have his entire parcel be the B-2 zoning, which we had thought he had, but unfortunately, it's not quite that way. There's been a new owner of the Great Island Plaza that owns three parcels there, and she's interested in redeveloping that property. I think if we've all gone by there, we've seen that it's a little bit of an underperforming property and has been a little bit neglected over the years. Here at Town Hall, we've certainly received many phone calls from different people looking to see what could be done to revitalize that property. So what they're hoping to do is, is rezone this property, and I'll give you a little blow-up here, makes it a little bit easier. This is Winslow Gray Road, Route 28. This is the Great Island Plaza here. Here's the post office. This is 12 Winslow Gray, which is a vacant building that kind of has the fencing around it, I'm sure you're all familiar, and this is a vacant wooded lot. All of this property is currently owned by the same person, and all of that property is currently zoned in the Village Center Overlay District, VC-1. The reason I bring that up is just to give a little education on what that means. The VCOD is an optional way for someone to redevelop their property. It gives a lot of development opportunities to someone, but it does require certain design criteria. On this particular property, you could have mixed-use development of up to 16 units per acre, along with different commercial development. The current owner has no interest in doing that. They'd like to develop something smaller under the current zoning, or the B-2 zoning. Unfortunately, this property here, the, the building, and then this property here, and a little piece of this property here, are in the R-25 zoning district. The main bulk of it is in the B-12. As I mentioned before, different zoning districts have different requirements. In order to have commercial parking in a residential zone, you need to get a special permit. If it was all B-2, it would just be part of the development, and it would be able to be done with parking more to the side and more to the rear, which is something that the Planning Board has been looking at and trying to promote over time. So the owner is really looking to try and just redevelop what they have in the front, and rehab and replace these buildings here, and have the parking be more in the rear behind the building, and limit some of the parking in the front in order to provide some type of buffer along the front. There's also, I don't know if anybody's been down, there's that weird curb cut that's right at the intersection of Winslow Gray, and it's not particularly safe. We're hoping to see if with the zoning amendment, they have some other options to put the parking here and move circulation around, they might be able to eliminate that curb cut that we're looking at. So the, the owner has gone ahead and done a couple renderings of the different things that might be done at the building. I'm just going to show you some examples here. At the bottom is the whole facade of the existing building kind of redone. This is what the building looks like now, and this is giving you an idea of what they want to do with it, to totally rehab it and bring it back to what it used to be. The building itself is rather long, but it has a lot of different interesting architecture to it, that if it was brought back to what it was, it might actually be very quaint and very cute. Here's another example for the Thai Basil Restaurant that's over here, which is, I think it's currently the only business that's in there and active and thriving. I go there for lunch a lot, it's very good. But it'd be nice to see if maybe you can redo it a little bit, put some, put some tables out front, maybe have a little green space in the front to add to that restaurant. And also at the very end where the old convenience store was, and it had that kind of unattractive overhang there, let's get rid of that and make this, this is being shown as maybe being a market with some different fruits and vegetables in the windows, and then maybe some different seating out front. Specific people or tenants haven't been identified yet, but this is the idea of what the, the current property owner is looking to do for the property. I'm sorry, could I ask you to sign in on there? Thank you so much. So that was basically what we're hoping to accomplish with Article Four and those zoning changes, zoning map changes for those four properties. The second special town meeting, Article Number Five, is related to signs. What we're hoping to do is allow for temporary special event signs for for-profit businesses, for temporary recreation on town-owned land, just like what the Country Fest at the drive-in site. They were not eligible for a larger community event sign to advertise their, their event on the site. What these amendments would do would be allow for for-profits to do that, but it's kind of restricted. It would need to be on town-owned land, it would need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen through their current town, use of town-owned land property, and it would also require some amendments or minor amendments to their, the current community event policy, sign policy that the Board of Selectmen have. Right now, that policy allows for an onsite 32-square-foot sign to advertise it, in addition to some off-premises directional signs to kind of direct people to that special event. Right now, that is allowed for a nonprofit or civic organization or religious organization, but it's not really allowed for for-profit endeavors. So this is changing that in order to allow those types of events to happen and be able to advertise them properly on the site. And the town is really looking to try and have more of these types of events, to bring people to town and kind of revitalize the whole area. And then the last thing it does is it allows for a third community information board. I don't know if you've seen, we have one right now at D-Y, and they're going to be putting the second one up in front of the Chamber of Commerce. The bylaw specifically limits us to two information boards in town, and this would add a third information board. The final location for that would ultimately be determined by the Board of Selectmen.
Very good. Thank you, Kathy. There's no one that I know gets information out as fast as this woman believes in accurate information. Any comments from the public? Yes, sir. Come to the table or the podium. Identify yourself, please.
My name is Robert DeSantis, and I live on 24 Winslow Gray Road.
Thank you.
I abut that property which you want to spot zone to commercial. I've lived in Yarmouth for over 30 years. My parents have been coming here for longer than that. They have the house right next to mine.
Pull the mic a little closer.
And we love, you know, we love Yarmouth. It's, it's a great place. The town has, you know, always been helpful, informative, and I personally can't say enough about, you know, about the town, becoming here almost all my life, and I enjoy it. And now, you know, that strip mall that you've been talking about, Great Island, has been an eyesore for years, years and years and years. And the owners are the same. It's now gone from the brother to the sister. So the people are the same, and I've, as development's been happening in Yarmouth, I live right, the house next door, and I smell, you know, red-faced jacks regularly, and I hear red-faced jacks regularly as it, midnight, the traffic is, you know, coming down Winslow Gray. And I built my own house, which I enjoy, and now I'm going to have this abutting, you know, this commercial zoning abutting my property. And you may say, well, they're just doing, now then, they could redo everything you want to do, all those beautiful renderings. They could do that without the spot zoning that you want to do, change to commercial. They can ask for that after they prove themselves, maybe years from now. It doesn't, if they don't get it today, that doesn't mean they can't get it two years from now. But they don't need it now. But once you give it to them, they got it. And whether they do this, if they do this, whether they sell it next year or to someone else after that, who's to say what they're going to do? But my land, my land has been diminished. So you've given it to them, this, this, are you giving this gift to them because of their name, because they happen to own the same property? Or you're giving it because of their location? Because why not give it to me? I, I'm, I live right, if it's two feet more, or an inch more, or seven inches more, I touch that property. Or is it because they have the same name as the Great Island owner? Then, am I a child of a lesser god? Did I do anything wrong? Do I have to live, seeing, you know, now they want to get higher, you know, I get a letter, they want to, you know, change their height restriction. Well, maybe they don't want to do, you're telling me they don't want to go any higher? Actually, they wanted low, but why are they asking for more height? Do I have to see this higher than it is?
I'm just going to jump in for a second. Do you have a piece of information that shows they want to go higher than the standard 35 feet?
I just got a letter from, in the mail, that they're looking now for a variance for height. Next week, they're looking for that.
Okay, that's not on this particular property. There's...
What property is that?
Yeah, unless I'm mistaken, hang on one sec. They also own this property.
Yeah.
The building that burned down.
Yeah.
They have to, they want to rebuild that, so they need to go, because it's a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot, they need a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is this for a meeting on the 24th?
Yeah.
Yes. So what this building now is, it's going to be, the existing building's a little bit smaller than what they want in height.
Okay.
So that's why they're asking for that. But that has nothing to do with this...
Well, I own that house, my house is that one right there, and I think I take care of it rather nice.
Yep.
So, once you do that, my backyard now becomes nonusable. I don't, I don't have normal pri, I don't have, you know, I don't, it, like I said, I can smell red-faced jacks when they're, you know, I smell it. You know, they're frying, they're cooking, it's, wind blows, and I smell it. I hear it at night, when the, when the motorcycles and people are leaving at midnight, I hear it. And I don't say anything. It is what it is. What are you going to do? I hear, you know, the inflatable park every day, you know, during the peak season, I hear it. You can sit there and, you know, and, but I don't say anything. It is what it is. Now, I got to have this? Have they proven themselves to you? They're giving these beautiful pictures to same owners. They haven't changed unless, they haven't, I don't, same people that own it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could maybe, it's, there was the three, the family owned it.
Yeah, right.
And there was a lot of squabbling in between the family.
Yeah.
And that's part of the reason nothing happened. I believe the mother passed away, there was a probate situation.
Right.
They divvied up the property in the family, and now the sister, who's always wanted to redevelop this property, but was unable to get the other siblings to go along, is interested in doing that.
Where does she live?
She lives, I believe she lives in Israel most of the time.
Okay, so she's not local.
A lot of our business owners may or may not be local.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's okay.
And the only other comment I have is, this is B-2. To extend the B-2 district to this and this property would not be considered spot zoning. There's already B-2 there, it would just be an extension of an existing zone. And as I mentioned before, all of these properties right now are currently in the Village Center Overlay District, VC-1, which would allow for a lot more extensive development than what she wants to do under a B-2. B-2 zoning gives you a far less opportunities than the VC-1. She wants to bring this back to the quaint little thing that it used to be, and have the parking in the rear so that you don't have as much parking in the front, you don't have this curb cut, we can add some green space in the front.
You could do that without changing it, right?
She needs to have the parking in the rear, and if this is an R-25 zoning district, she can't have the parking around there with the shared driveways. It's not allowed by our zoning. If she wanted to sell the property, as you mentioned, she could sell it to somebody who would develop it as a Village Center Overlay District project, and it would be substantially more development on this property than what would be allowed in the future.
But those other, but those would still, is that a residential zone, that house?
This is a, like I...
The house, the 12.
Right now, this is residential? I guess maybe I should explain the difference between an underlying zoning and an overlay zoning. Underlying zoning is kind of, you can always develop under the underlying zoning, but the Yarmouth has a lot of optional overlay districts, which are incentives to try to get people to redevelop their underperforming properties. And this area is in the Village Center Overlay District, and if a developer wanted to, they could take advantage of the opportunities, the mixed-use, the higher residential density that would be allowed. We want it to look, look a specific way. We wouldn't allow any parking in the front. We want the buildings to be a little bit closer to the roadway, and there's other criteria that they would need to meet in order to be eligible for a Village Center Overlay District project.
Is my property on that same area?
No, it, it ends right here.
Oh.
Yeah.
Just like that.
And, and, you know, people come to us and ask for rezoning periodically of their properties.
We should do a, in the, at the public, at the town meeting, we should do a white line all the way around, or a yellow line all the way around to show the...
You can't see it?
To show the different zoning right now. He or she could, could do a VCO.
Good point.
Yeah, I'll, I can blow this up a little bit, a little bit bigger and try and hatch it as a VC-1 project, yeah. That's a good idea.
Any more questions?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You have to be careful saying that today. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Susan Bruder, and I live in West Yarmouth. I just need a clarification. Kathy, under the proposed amendment, there'll be no residential here at all? Is that what the, is that what the amendment, it does away with the R-25s to...
With the underlying zoning? What's allowed in the B-2 zoning district is you could have one residential dwelling unit per lot with your commercial. Like I said, with the VCOD...
And how many lots are there? What are we dealing, just with the three lots?
There's three lots, but I don't know how they plan on, they might combine them in a certain way, so maybe there's only two lots. I, I don't know exactly all of their development plans. We haven't seen something formally submitted at the town.
But there's no, there's no residential contemplated at this point? It would be...
No, they're, they're not proposing to develop with high-density residential development under the VCOD, so no. Right now, I haven't heard, but they do have the potential of having, like, they could have one residential dwelling unit, like, on the second floor above. I'm not sure that they plan on doing it. And same thing here, if they redevelop this building into a mixed-use commercial, they could have, you know, one residential dwelling on top.
And the plan would be the frontage along Route 28, there'd be some sort of buffer? Because right now, as you know, it's just a concrete sidewalk. They would put grass and plantings and...
That's true. Yeah, that passes.
Yeah. And we've spent a couple, we've had a couple meetings with the developer, and one of the main things that we've been commenting on is cleaning up this particular area, reducing the amount of pavement in the front, reducing the amount of parking in the front, so we can add a nice strip. Don't have the curb cut here. Let's green up this whole thing. They may, you know, if they, if they do end up with, like, one-way traffic here or parallel parking, then they'd have to come around here and come out here. It eliminates some of their parking here and eliminates some of their parking here. So to get this, we need to provide them with a place to have their parking in the rear.
What is the contemplated number of parking spaces they're talking about in the back? Do they have, do they have a number yet?
I do not know that. I don't think they're that far along. They're working on their development plans now. It's going to be a function of whether this zoning passes on what they end up...
Is there any possibility we could eliminate parking in the front and just have it all in the back, which is what...
I keep asking them for that.
Because some of those restaurants, you could have a little plaza out front where people could eat outside.
Yes, and, and we had talked about that. You know, if this ends up becoming parallel parking, you might even be able to bump out a little area and have an outdoor seating area for the, the restaurant that's there, and still have some ability to have...
Fire trucks.
Exactly. The buffer here, but what Brad just mentioned is fire truck access. That's always plays a role in how you lay things out. So I think they may require something that goes all the way around the building, or if not, they'd want to get on this side and this side, and certain distance requirements to the access plays into sprinklers and those type of things. But they're not quite at that, at that level yet. They really need to know whether the town's going to support the change in the zoning before they spend a lot of money.
How many zoning changes are they contemplating?
Just to change, this, this lot here is a mix of, this little piece here is R-25, the rest of it is B-2, so we change all of that to B-2. This is R-25, we change all to B-2.
Okay.
This is R-25, and that would go all to B-2. Again, the, the VCOD zoning would remain.
It would, it would remain.
Yeah.
Okay. And then a comment on the, that site now that's directly to the east, right there, the notion that, because wasn't there a proposal for a lot in back of that, they were going to put some condominiums in there? Is that still a live proposal? Because that would be very, very dense there, extremely dense.
This is much more dense than anything she would be proposing here under the B-2 zoning, because this was being developed under the VCOD.
Right, but wasn't, wasn't there a proposal to put, like, 18 condominiums or something?
I think it was 16 with, like, 2,000 or 3,000 square feet of commercial.
Is that still ongoing?
Still a potential, yeah.
Because that, that plus the new building, plus the Great Island, you've got a lot of density in those two lights, that's always been a problem. So that's something that, you know, the Planning Committee should also take into account when you look at this entire intersection.
One of the ideas in the Village Center Overlay District, and it was incorporated into this, is a place to maybe connect behind.
Behind.
So people can go, if you want to take the turn, come down here and take the turn, and not have to come back out onto Route 28. The Planning Board's always trying to advocate, advocate for those back connector roads as much as possible. So that's something that we will discuss with the, with the developer as well.
Okay. And any sense of timing? She's waiting for the...
I don't have a sense of timing. She hasn't submitted anything formally for that. I think she's concentrating on this building here, because that was a fire situation and demolished.
So she owns that site also?
She owns this site also, and that's the one the gentleman was asking about. I think that was the Zoning Board of Appeals notice for that property.
That's the one that burned down?
Correct, and they demolished it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah.
Yes?
Christine Greeley from West Yarmouth. Actually, following up with some of what Susan said, currently, getting in and out of that post office, which is a very active, busy post office, because the next one's all the way down in South Yarmouth, is a nightmare, particularly with the various curb cuts. And one of the ways that people do get in and out of that post office is with that lot to the right that's looking for further development, yeah, and through there, and then you sort of get around and you have three or four parking spaces in front of the post office, you then have another curb cut, you then have, try to get by those buildings to get out over at the far end, to get out there. I think there's a great deal of planning that needs to be done with anything that goes on in that plaza. It is a nightmare, and it's, it's complicated by the traffic lights, the two traffic lights that exist there, the fact that there's a mobile station, gas station, people coming in and out of that. You can see there's also some lines in the highway for turn lanes. It is a major, major problem in there, in terms of development or use, or whatever is going to go in there. And it also, obviously, as people well know, it's really, really ugly. However, when you go to put anything in front of there to make it prettier, you're also going to do a lot of site, you know, you know, sort of site, site issues for getting in and out anyway, because of the visuals with trees and plantings and stuff like that. And I think that's a significant, significant issue in terms of the density and the other things that are going to go on there, and I'm very, very concerned about that. The second thing I'm questioning is, what is the actual acreage size of what the existing lot is that is currently show? And then each of those additional two, so that how large will that parcel become in totality?
The combined is 2.52 acres. This is like 1.78, 0.24, 0.5.
I'm sorry, what?
Sorry, I said that very fast.
The big one, the big, first one.[1744.33]
I think 1.78.
Okay.
This is like .24, and this is .5 acres.
Okay.
So the total is, I believe, is 2.52 acres.
Okay. And as it currently stands, then, under the existing zoning for those, it would mean what? One residential property per each of the two that are looking to be rezoned, or what?
It depends on whether they want to continue to develop under the underlying zoning or whether they would be interested in developing under the VCOD, which would allow for mixed use.
Okay. And that's when you get into the 16 units per acre and all?
Just, like I say, not what she wants to do. She's not indicated that she wants to develop under the VCOD at all. She wants to kind of bring this back to what it used to be and make this kind of a nice little plaza area it once was.
I mean, I have to, you know, in looking at it observationally, I always get very concerned when you start to see the intrusion of commercial development further into residential neighborhoods. I mean, I think that one of the things that has worried me for a long, long time is a belief that when you reach the Hyannis line to start into Yarmouth and head all the way to the east side to the Bass River, we look like one giant strip mall. It's not pretty. I mean, it's very exciting today to see the Yankee Village come down, because even as the first of the buildings are down, you start to see more of Mill Creek, or Mill, the pond and everything behind there. And I got to tell you, it was like, wow, fabulous. Because if you think about it, you get to the other side of Hyannis into Centerville, you're treeed, it's beautiful, it's very, very pretty. You get over the other side of the Bass River, you're seeing trees and things. And I think there's been a great deal of push in terms of commercial development, commercial development, but the kinds of things that are then going on, as you look at it from the road, to tell you the truth, there's days when I think you just go there to get through to one end of the town to the other, just to get out of here before it looks pretty. And unfortunately, I keep looking at the fact that repeatedly businesses are in there for a year or so, and they're gone. You see the vacancy signs up. I mean, I've been here long enough to know and remember the names of the various businesses that have been in the different buildings and the turnover and things with them. And then you take a look at the number of properties that are vacant. So I have some real concerns about the sort of everything for commercial development, everything for commercial development, and, you know, the intrusion into residential areas. And those are just some of my comments on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Robert Savara, 23, New Hampshire. I just want to say, Kathy, this is exactly what I expect you to do for the entire 28 Strip, to take properties like this and incentivize these people to put money into Yarmouth. This building's been like this forever, and this is what we need, which is more commercial on 28. If you understand financing and how much it costs for residential compared to kids, and how much more profitable it is for the town to do commercial developments, and how much a better benefit it is, then you'd understand this is exactly what the town needs, this type of quaint properties along 28, to still give us a nice Cape image and at the same time improve these dilapidated properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Tom DiCanello. I have several businesses in town. I've been here almost 60 years. I enjoy Yarmouth immensely. I live about 200 feet off of 28. I love the noise. I go to New York, I visit my mom, it's too quiet, I can't sleep. I'm just, that's just the way I am. And I love it. People come here, people live here, because it's a great place. And commercial has to go along with residential. Our commercial tax rate is 5.75%. That's alarming. People who live in Yarmouth can't work in Yarmouth, they have to go outside of Yarmouth to get a job, because that means they have to drive. If there's more businesses in town, they could walk to work, take their bike, less commuting, less cars on the road, less traffic. We can't have services provided on 98% of the taxpayer, which is residential. That's absurd. 351 communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the average is 80/20. In 1970, we were 18% commercial tax rate. We're 5.75. What is wrong with that? I'm very fortunate, I have actually two businesses right where I live, so I don't drive that much, which is okay. If I do drive, I'm up early and I'm off the road, and that works for me. But I think a healthy community has to have an equal balance. As me as a resident, as long as a business owner, I don't want to pay 98% of my taxes going towards the town of Yarmouth. I want the business to have their fair share. I want people to live and work in Yarmouth. And if this goes down, if we get 3%, 2%, we're just going to be a bedroom community. Everyone's going to be working in Dennis and Barnstable and wherever else they have to travel to. Right now, they travel over the Cape, as we just heard from this young lady, because we don't have enough businesses in town. Yes, it's not pretty sometimes, but overallistically, it's better for the community. This building, we all would love to put paint on it ourselves, or go up there at midnight and clean it up. We would, we would love to do that. So finally, after how many generations, this poor woman, I mean, I come from a family business, five generations, I understand how it works. Her hands were tied because that's the way it is. Now she has her hands uncuffed, she wants to make it pretty, she's not asking for a whole lot because she could ask for a lot more, right, planning board? She could ask for a lot more. So I think we should, you know, really look at what she's trying to do and spruce it up. Because I really, I look at Red Face Jackson when I go west, and when I come east, I look at Red Face Jackson. I don't want to look at that. It's terrible. We have a beautification team, which the town pays for, which goes up and down 28 to try to make it look beautiful. And thank God for that, because what else? We don't have anybody else to do that. We need the business owners to finally understand that they got to update their property. I try to update mine as much as possible. I would love to rip it down, start over, but I need a sewer system, because I'm not spending $200,000 on a septic system. That's ridiculous, that's bad money. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Alan, this is my wife, Reina. We live at 9 Winslow Gray, which is the first house on the other side of the street. So we have a pretty good view of what's going on over there.
Not great.
The building is in really bad shape. I'm really surprised that they're going to renovate it. It's, if you look at it, the wood is, it's basically close to falling down.
Yeah, we don't even know if that's possible.
But anything they do would be a great improvement, because it's an eyesore. My main concerns are, now, they changed the lights this year, and what we're seeing now is that, especially during the season, I cannot get out of my driveway, because the traffic has backed up. The lights now favor Route 28. Before, what they did, when someone came to the light, it picked up a signal and it would turn. Now, it's a long light, and the cars back up. Sometimes, I just can't get out. That's one concern I have. The other concern, you mentioned the front, cleaning it up, and it looks good. Nobody mentioned the back. The back is dumpsters and a dirt road and-
Horrible.
It's a bathroom back there, is what it really is.
We've seen it all.
We've seen it. I mean, almost every, when that corner drugstore was there or market, people would just go back there. It was, you know, they should just put a sign, restroom.
Yeah, they were using it for urinal. We saw people go, when we had the dumpster right there and the boxes that you put your used clothes in, people would dive into the dumpster, come out with a new outfit. I mean, people were sleeping in that alley.
People were sleeping there.
They dragged out mattresses, it was horrible.
It was unbelievable, it really was.
So anything would be an improvement. What are you going to do with the house though? Are they going to renovate that empty house also?
I don't know whether-
Think they're going to keep that?
I don't know whether Jan wants to talk, but you have to come up to the, you have to come and identify.
House is coming down?
Oh, the house is coming-
We'd have to say that there's just, there's no formal plans before the planning board at all for any of this, so we're, just as much as you do about what their larger intentions are.
But what I don't understand is, how can we change the zoning without all the information as to what they're going to do? You know, I'd like to see some blueprints and some plans, some real stuff. Because you change the zoning, then they can pretty much do anything they want.
Well, I get it, that's not necessarily true. Actually, they can do more now with the Village Center Overlay District, and they can with the B2, which is what they want to use. So they do have the ability now to do more than what they're asking, without us changing any kind of zoning. In the business world, no smart business owner, you can back me up for this, is going to invest their money in plans and a design and a formal site plan until they know that they're, they can use the site the way that they need to. It's just, they wouldn't do it. So you'll never see renovation if that's the case, because they're not, they're not going to be foolish with their money.
I mean, the pictures look great. If they could do that, make it look like a quaint little village, that'd be wonderful. It'd be super. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, the fireworks the other day, awesome, awesome.
Great. Best fireworks, I'm 73, 75, best fireworks we've ever seen.
Wow, great.
They were amazing.
Just to back up, Chris, the idea of putting a uniform zoning on all of, all of the properties there, outlined in red, puts that consistent with the same, with, with the B2 as well as the VC OD overlay. So you, you're consistent with two different kinds of ways in which the properties can be developed, but at least that consistency makes it attractive to a developer to do a complete project rather than a fragmented project.
Any, any development of this would require redoing this and having parking. Once you start having this area activated, the whole passive surveillance, you're not going to have people in there. They can kind of hide in there now, and once this is all redeveloped, you're less likely to have that type of activity.
Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Gary Brennan. I own 23 Winslow Gray Road, and actually, I grew up on 23 Winslow Gray Road, so I remember Great Island back in maybe its peak, when there was the little pharmacy on the corner and the little local drugstore and, and small hardware store that, so one of the things that I'm encouraged by this plan, if they look to keep it small and quaint as it is, and just kind of to keep it simple for me, anyway, what I understand is by this zoning change, they're actually applying more restrictions to themselves. Is that correct? No?
I wouldn't say that.
What it does, it gives them a level playing field in terms of, it's a blank sheet of paper and all the squares are the same.
Okay.
Right now, the only blank piece of paper they have is that they go with the VC O1, and that whole parcel they can use under the current rules are in this pink book. But what they're trying to do now is say, we'd like to follow the guidelines that most of town uses, which is B2, and we want all our squares to look the same.
Mm-hmm. And if I'm not mistaken, the parcel furthest to the north, the long skinny one, that used to be kind of a commercial industrial screen craft back in the day. So, and one of the things that I remember my parents fighting over, if you will, was that they sought access onto Winslow Gray Road that they didn't have before, and, and that was a concern back then. But in, in reference to the, my, the people that just spoke previous to me, the idea of making the rear part of it more for parking and so forth, I don't see the problems that are currently going on there continuing, because there'll be much more people observation, if you will. But traffic coming out onto, onto 28 from Winslow Gray, that would be a concern for, like, number nine and, and I'm assuming whatever the next one is, and all the way up to 23, which I think my driveway might just be to the north of that, but-
Well, you got to show up at a town meeting then, so you can point it out.
I think that's it, right there. Yep. But, you know, that, that would be a concern, so I think traffic, the flow would, would need to be addressed somehow. But, thank you, I just appreciate the fact that they're at the point where something can be done with that, with that block. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else in the public? We'll just open it up to the board relative to the comments you've all heard, some of the comments that were made.
I think, Brad, I was just wondering if you were going to close the public hearing? I think you could get all the comments, because you don't know whether that will foster some questions from the public and more interaction. Brad needs to leave, so I don't know if he has anything he wishes to say.
Why don't you start off, Brad?
Okay. I appreciate everyone coming forward. Chris, you know as well as I do over the years that we've ripped down a lot of buildings and built a lot of parks. I mean, Rascals used to be there, and now that's a park. Hotel came down, that was a park. 1812 House, that's a park. I think we've done a lot. I've gotten my butt kicked a few times on town meeting trying to keep a building up, and they're like, no, rip it down, open land. So when you say it's a wall of, of, of concrete the whole way, I sort of flinch, but very good comments. And just to remind the, the people here, the 99 was built in an area that encroached on residential area. And in fact, my car got keyed that night, and my soul got cursed to hell by someone sitting in the back right-hand corner of this, of this very room. And to this day, the 99 has been a wonderful, wonderful neighbor for all of us. I have a feeling with this much heritage in our lovely town, this person's going to go to bat for Yarmouth, and I don't think they're going to push the edges, and I think they're really going to do a good job. I'll wrap it up with this. If we can close that curb cut, that would be fantastic. I remember when Christie, my host, pushed back at us at his Hess station down there on Bass River, and we said, Christie, you got to close this curb. And he did, and it worked out, and he made good money, and he sold it to Speedway, and the rest is history. So losing a curb cut's not that bad a thing, but it'll keep everyone from cutting through and going right up Winslow Gray from 28, and taking off some of the parking spaces will help too. So I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I've, I've got to run. If you want to sign me one of these articles, feel free.
Yes, how about the signed? You've got some-
One through five.
Yeah. You've got some experience with the sign bylaws.
Then I'll see you all on town meeting floor for the sign amendment. There we go. Thank you, I apologize.
Any other comments from the board? Lee?
Yes, I actually do. Kathy, with the proposal that, the concept that's before us tonight in your presentation, can you describe the process for them for, to get permitted to do all of the changes? So maybe then, is there more additional public process and involvement with the, with the considerations of their changes?
Yeah, that's a very good question. Because of the magnitude of the improvements that they're, that they're proposing, they would likely need to come to Design Review Committee, which is a public committee. Chris serves as the planning board representative on that. I think that they would love to see stuff like, like this, they'd be very interested in it. They not only look at the architecture, but they also look at the site design and the site layout. They're all about the buffers, they're all about the things that we've been talking about that will make Route 28 look nicer, and those, they will be providing those different comments. Then they would go to Site Plan Review, which is, this is if, if it's all under the underlying zoning, the B2. Then they would go to Site Plan Review, which is town, town staff, where we kind of say, oh, you need to meet this regulation, you need to meet that regulation. Fire department gets involved, wants to make sure they can get all the way around the buildings and that, all of that is done. Health department will get involved with regard to the septic system and that type of thing. And also, the building commissioner will identify whether anything that they're proposing would require specifically from the zoning board of appeals. So if that's the case, then they would need to come to the zoning board of appeals for special permit relief, hopefully no variances. People try, we try to steer people away from that, I don't think that they're working on that. But because this project, this property has already been developed, and it kind of is what it is, our, our desire is to push them to get as many design elements that we all want to see on Route 28. I got to say, they've been very amenable to the conversations that we've had preliminarily that we've had preliminarily with Town Staff. And I think the vision that HIA has for this property is something that I think the community would be happy to see ultimately here. And certainly, we're, we at the staff level are always advocating for those things. Reducing curb cuts, adding buffers, getting rid of as much parking in the front as possible. But because it's already developed, I don't know how much special permit relief would be required, but that would be identified by the Building Commissioner during the Site Plan Review process.
Do they have a timeline on this at all?
I, I do not know. I think, I think once the, we have a special town meeting, and then they'll kind of be moving a little bit quicker. Like I said, they're really concentrating on this property. And one of the things that got, was considered as part of this is they actually put in a little bit of a speed bump here, because we are concerned with people coming through. We've also asked that the ZBA consider requiring them to, to narrow the curb cut. That curb cut there is like 40 feet wide. We're working with the fire department, because we want to make sure that it's wide enough for their access. But if we can narrow it from 42 down to 30 or something, that will help, and we can continue the sidewalk along there. Once you start making people have to do things like that and go like that, they're much less likely to do the, the cutting through.
Thank you. For Design Review, I'm sorry. So I'm really familiar, really rusty, because it's been over five years since I've been part of Yarmouth. But with Design Review, is that a public process where the abutters get notified?
No, it is not. It's a public meeting process, but it is not a notification process. Same, the Site Plan Review Team is typically not an open meeting. It's just a staff-level meeting to provide, it's an opportunity for all staff to get together and talk amongst themselves with the developer about what the existing regulations require them to do. It's only when you need some type of special permit relief, or some relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals, that becomes that public abutter notification, which you got for the Zoning Board of Appeals for the other property.
But the public can attend during the Design Review?
The public can attend during Design Review. It is simply a publicly noticed meeting, meaning it goes up on the town of Yarmouth calendar as a, as a meeting agenda, and it also, and it's posted at least 48 hours in advance. If you're interested in getting notified of those, you go on the town website under Notify Me, click Design Review, and when I submit the agenda, you'll get a little email that'll tell you, or a little text on your phone that it's coming.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I hear everyone's comments, and, and I think it's a really challenging thing to balance the quality of life with the residential and the commercial. But we, I hear also people comparing us and wanting to be something like downtown Harwich, having a central point. And with the possibilities of development in other areas that are really close, having this shifted forward and having that kind of like cafe-style people out and sitting and, and having conversations and living, not driving, but living on Route 28, I think that's what I'm hearing, is having that nice balance between the two. So I am in favor of this as long as there is an additional public processes. And I understand also with Board of Health, with any restaurants, that requires Board of Health and any additional seating and all of that kind of stuff. So there is additional public opportunities to participate. The only thing I do see, though, is the parking in the rear and the curb cut in the back. That does concern me a little bit, because it is, it is abutting literally a residential area. It was not existing, and that is something that would impact the residents of that neighborhood that didn't happen when they bought the house prior to. So that would, I think, be something that we would maybe need to at least keep in the forefront of having that conversation, as well as lighting and trash, rats, all of that other kind of stuff, because it hasn't been, it hasn't been an actual restaurant, an active parcel for many, many years. So I think those are all things that we need to make sure that, as to retain the quality of life with the residents there.
The zoning bylaw does require a 20-foot vegetated buffer on the side between a business zone and a residential zone, and it really needs to be a very dense screen. So there is, there is some of that in order to help with, with the neighbors. And with regard to lighting, the zoning bylaw requires that a photometric plan be done, so that they're not having any light going off onto a budding property. So there is things in the bylaw that protect abutters already. I just wanted to let people know.
Thank you.
Change always brings forward concerns, and what comes to mind is your Mill Hill Club years ago, and the time that we spent relative to the information that was absorbed by the residents and so, so on and so forth. But the main thing is that if you look at the site now, if you look at the Alzheimer's facility, and you look at the way it was designed, you look at the architectural, site design standards, that's what we're about. That's what we're hoping to promote all through 28, with a mix of residential housing, small businesses, and maybe at some point, based on the ability of, of the land area, have a branded hotel, something like the Hamptons, Hampton Inn. But I think if you move further east, some of you might remember the old gas station that was across from where the condos are now. And I think it's Country Gas Station?
Cape Cod Farms, is that the one you're talking about?
Cape Cod Farms, yeah.
I was going to mention that.
So anyway, we went back and forth with the developer owner in regards to eliminating one of those curb cuts, and I think we had probably three meetings on that. And the end result was, we just held our ground and eliminated one of the curb cuts on the corner, which required moving some of the pumps, that they finally agreed to, and we eliminated that curb cut. Now, across the street were those new condos that just, just been completed. I think there's five or six buildings in there. And that Charles White Company had been before the Planning Board, probably a year and a half, two years, before they started that project, trying to find prospective tenants for retail and commercial, which they couldn't do. So finally, they decided to do the condos. And if you look at the condos are the, as they are now, and you look at the bermout front with all the planting, it, it's fantastic. It looks great. So we're talking about a distressed piece of property here that's not really doing much on the tax rolls, as Tom DiCanello had mentioned before. And I think that it's, we're looking for quaint buildings in, in that particular area. We're not looking for excessive traffic and so forth. But if you look at what's there now, and you look at the potential of what you saw on the screen, I think it would fit in very, very nice. So, go ahead, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Your not closing the public hearing did spark another interest. Thank you. Just getting to, one of the participants was talking about the post office. I had conversations with the Post Master General in South Yarmouth, which, which runs the post office in West Yarmouth. And him and I had talked about maybe relocating the post office in West Yarmouth to maybe somewhere in the middle of West Yarmouth. And he would be very happy if someone from the, this department, or maybe all of you collectively, would challenge yourself and try to find him a new location, because it is very cumbersome. It's, as Ms. Greeley said, it's extremely busy. But it's very well warranted. The federal government does not want to close a post office in West Yarmouth, but they would be more than happy to move it to the center of West Yarmouth, somewhere where most of the residents, the residents would not have to cross 28 to get to. So thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Tom. So, as Kathy said, I sit on the Design Review Committee as part of my commitment here to the, the Planning Board. And I just want to assure you that the members that sit there with me share the same concerns you do about the way things look, and curb cuts, and traffic. And when plans like this, when they do bring their plans before us, they are vetted very well. And I, I can almost guarantee you that there's going to be some, they're going to need some kind of relief. They're going to ask us for something. And that's where we get to tell them, if you want this, we want this. And that's, that's where the power comes in. And we're pretty good about looking at those plans and getting what we want. So I just wanted to let you know that we're, we're on your side in this. And please sign up for that notification, so you can hear about those public meetings, because the last thing we want to do is come back at the end, and you say that you never got to see a thing and, and have no idea what's going on. So please sign up for that.
We don't want to scare them away, either.
It's a balance.
Thank you.
We do, too. We really do. Any other comments?
Mine, mine would be very, very brief. I came down 40 years ago for, to buy some property for vacationing. And Great Island was, was, was wonderful. It had everything. It had, had a little bakery. It had a little restaurant. It had all the different things that you, that you like to see in, in a, in a town. And it was, it was a vibrant, vibrant place. But it sure has changed. And I, I for one am glad to see that we're finally going to be moving forward on it.
Thank you, Tom. Any more comments, Kathy?
Did you read this into the record, the written comment?
Yeah, probably.
Do you have it?
I do.
Do you want me to read it? I'm sorry. We did receive one written comment, and I'll just read it. "I own 3133 Anthony Road in West Yarmouth. I am an abutter to the owner seeking to rezone and redevelop the Great Island Plaza and Old Post Office, 12 Winslow Gray Road and 18 Winslow Gray Road," in parentheses, "which Robert DeSantis has been cleaning and taking care of for over 20 years while the owners allowed the buildings at home to fall into disrepair and to be condemned." Unquote. "It would be wonderful if the buildings were removed and something new were built. I agree that your letter to me from October 8th, I just sent out a letter notifying people of this public meeting if they were an abutter to the properties that were being rezoned," and that's what he's referencing here, "that the property is underperforming and in need for redevelopment. However, I am strongly against allowing a zoning for a hotel in these, on those properties. This would mean a three-story building that would destroy the beauty the Cape is known for. A zoning for business structures would make sense if it is aesthetically pleasing and would support small businesses that would add to the kind of charm Harwich, Dennis, Osterville, or Chatham are known for in Route 28 Yarmouth sorely lacks. But to go from decrepit miniscule structures to a three-story monstrosity would be nothing positive for Yarmouth. Yarmouth doesn't need more hotels. It needs thriving quaint small businesses to draw visitors into charming and unique stores like the ones on Route 6A. Please reconsider the kind of zoning you will grant. Let it give vibrancy and beauty that our area lacks and not large ugly structures where guests come and stay and go elsewhere to shop and walk. The sad truth is that the guests who rent my home in the summer ask me where to go. I have to direct them to other towns, because Yarmouth is our, in our area lacks the Cape Cod charm. You, the Planning Board, can make a huge difference in the type of building you will allow to be zoned. Respectfully, Andrew Corris." I think what we're proposing is going to do this. I think, and I did respond to him to let him know that what she was proposing was kind of generally along those lines, and that right now, the Village Center Overlay District would allow for a hotel. But that's not what she's proposing at all.
Okay, you all set?
Mr. Chairman, do you, you need a motion to close the hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, just go ahead.
I think if you guys are through, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Motion.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now we'll discuss the amendments, and...
Yeah, we, we need...
Thank you all for coming.
Yes, thank you very much. We need to basically recommend it and also determine who's going to do the actual recommendation and the explaining at town, at town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Brad said he would take the, the sign amendment. And I'll do the zoning unless someone else wants it.
I can help you with that, just because I was a, kind of one of the authors of the VCOD, so if anybody, any questions, I can be with you.
You bet. That would be, that sounds great.
So we need a formal, a formal vote to...
Yes.
Who, who recommends and explains is less involved, but the actual recommending of the article and the vote on that. Article four? Article four is the zoning map amendment?
Yes.
I can make a motion that I'd take care of it.
And to recommend?
To recommend.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And, and is, based on consensus, is Chris going to do it, or are you going to do it, Tom?
Oh, Chris can do it. I'll help him.
Great.
He'll be fine.
We may need to provide, I think, a little bit more information in the explanation than what was included in the warrant, simply because of the level of, of questions. And we will have a slide, or a couple slides for that.
I motion for Brad to do the signage.
Okay, second.
And, and recommend the article five?
Yes.
And who's second?
All those in favor?
I second.
Okay, so I'm going to, typically, I write the, a little memo that summarizes the public hearing. I think there was, I'll try and summarize that a little bit for them, as well as include the memo, providing your recommendations. And that will go to them tomorrow, and they will bring it up on October 22nd, which is their next Board of Selectment meeting. It's not on until 9:30.
Really?
Yeah, the wastewater update's on at eight for the draft, the draft agenda that I saw. And, but we're not on until 9:30. I will obviously be there. I'll be there for the wastewater anyway.
Okay.
So you, I don't know if you were planning on going for the wastewater update for the, I don't know if the rack is attending that or not?
Probably, yeah. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion relative to the Community Preservation Act input on anticipated applications. You'll see the memo in your packet. Gary Ellis, Chairman.
I think CPA is just trying to get an idea of whether you guys see any particular projects coming down the pipeline in the near future that could potentially be funded by CPA. And that includes the recreation, open space, affordable housing, and historic preservation. They've also included a little table there for some potential, potential projects. We did ask for, already asked for the 1.5 million this fiscal year for the drive-in site, to get us up to our full original ask of 3.7.
And the historic, under historic Cape Plate House, that went from 50,000 to 65,000. But I, I think it's just, it's kind of hard for us to guesstimate figures, you know? I mean...
I guess they were just like, if any of you knew of, of anything in the community, if there's a historic structure you knew that might need some CPA funding. I think a lot of the obvious ones are related to the recreation, which have a master plan, and they're working kind of their way through the recreation master plan. Obviously, the drive-in site was, was a big one. And there's a lot of affordable housing. A lot of those are kind of standard every year for affordable housing.
Kathy, there was a list that was prepared through Mary Wagon, showing some of the anticipated applications. And it doesn't have a total on here, but the, the biggest, the biggest item would certainly be the support of the drive-in site. The next biggest that they're talking about is the Forest Road Project, which would be the public housing. And the likelihood of that moving forward right now on this, in this fiscal year is probably nonexistent. But the, the rest of, the rest of the items that they've proposed are in the 200,000 or 400,000 dollar range per item. And they'll probably be able to do their, their program without too much difficulty. But that does impact on the, on the, on the sewer plan, on the, the financial plan, as to whether or not CPC gets its full 3% or, or as, as has been discussed, the one and a half percent. So it's, it's still up in the air, certainly.
I had a question on the, on this massive list here. They have not really prioritized or identified what they're going to be asking for in the spring.
Oh, they're working on it now. Yeah. Applications were due, I believe, October 4th, and they're working, CPC is working their way through those applications?
I see.
To identify what they want to put on the annual town meeting. Is that what you're talking about? Yeah, they're working on it.
Yeah, they, they, I went through the process of, for the bike paths that didn't go through. But their process is to look at the, look at the different projects and sit down and have a discussion as, as to which ones they're going to, they're going to recommend to the selectmen, and work on, on the details of that after the first of the year, and prepare for the May town meeting. So they're, they're still in the process of doing that. And again, the, the big issue that, that they are still facing is... that, that they are still facing is, is that either the 3% or the 1.5% allocation. It's, it's the biggest item, biggest topic of conversation for the CPC.
And that's really a decision of the Board of Selectmen, right?
I don't, I...
It would have to be an article at annual town meeting, which typically the Board of Selectmen decide those types of things, but I think they certainly would take the recommendations of the RAC and the CPC and those different committees into, into play. When, when Gary went before the Board of Selectmen, I think what, one of the things that came out of that was trying to identify, what are the projects that are coming down the pipeline? Have we done most of the things that we're working on, or is there a really big need? Just to kind of get an idea of how, how much that decreasing from three to one and a half might have an impact on CPC and the projects that are kind of in the pipeline. There are a lot of projects that, like I say, have been, like through the master plan for recreation, where they're, they can find different types of funding, and they usually always look for different grant funding, but having that seed money of CPA allows us to have the match for a lot of those grant opportunities.
Any other comments?
So nothing to recommend to CPC? They were looking for, they'd sent this out to a bunch of different boards and committees to see if they had anything to add.
I don't, again, I mean, you'd be guessing, and...
That's okay, I can tell Mike that we talked about it, there was nothing specifically identified.
Well, I can just, you know, relative to our meeting today, the application process closed on the 4th of October, and we have 12 applications that are coming forward, and we met on three today. And we discussed the issues, sometimes we'll ask for more information, and then we'll meet in probably two weeks, and we'll be, be discussing the next two or three applications. Sometimes, again, more information is needed, but it's a process that has been going on for quite some time, and I would just like to say that when I first got on the board, on the CPA committee, CPC committee, I should say, we were getting between 24 and 26 applications. Last year, I believe, we approved either six or seven applications. Was it, remember that, Tom? And, and this year, out of the 12, I, my best guess would be somewhere around seven or eight. So what I'm saying in essence is that a lot of these people that are coming back are the same entities that have come back before the CPC committee over a period of years. And if you take and you look at that, and we've got some great projects coming, and we've got 1.5 for the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee submitted that application, but the bottom line is wastewater is a serious project coming forward, and we're looking at how that's going to impact our residential taxpayers. I think we all heard Tom Nicconello speak earlier in regards to the residential portion of taxes that are needed to support the town of Yarmouth, and what the commercial portion is as well, 5.5, 5.34, whatever. But the bottom line is that this overall situation relative to wastewater affects everyone in Yarmouth, and I think that there should be some serious consideration given to going back to the 2016 meeting, January, which I attended, in front of the Board of Selectmen, who had as guests Senator Seiya and Representatives Whalen and Crocker. And they all said at that time, because of the expense, that they wanted to keep it off of the property tax rolls, and they wanted to seek alternative funding. And that's what we're trying to do now, is seeking alternative funding. And it was mentioned at that meeting, on the 16, 2016, that a one and a half split would be practical relative to the other alternative types of financing, solar farm, a short-term rental, 2.75%, things like that, that would take for the program. So that's where we're at, and I think that it's a situation where something is gonna have to give, and I think that what's important is how these articles are written for our spring town meeting, because there's, there's two factions, whether, you know, keep it the way it is, split it 1.5% or add 1% to it and put that on the property tax rate, so...
But Tom, isn't the fact that the Board of Selectmen are the people that are really gonna do, set the priorities?
Yeah.
So really, it's in their bailiwick to, to look at what the priorities are overall for the town and make a, and make a decision.
Sure.
So we can talk about it.
Well, we were asked, you know, to, to talk about it, and that's, that's on our agenda, and I think that that's what we're doing now, we're just having an open discussion.
The element of the CPA, whether it's a 1.5%, that is only one of the four elements that Rich Bianovu has put together as the financial plan to accomplish that zero impact on the tax rate for that first phase of the sewer plan. And so the, the 1.5% is only one, one component. All the other things that he has, has put together in that, in that financing plan are tentative, they depend on other decisions and other, other factors also influencing. So we, the Board of Selectmen have the, have to make that decision, have to make that choice ultimately, and we hope that it, it will move in the right direction.
I think the planning board did write a letter of support.
We did, for RAC.
Right.
The RAC committee, yeah. Any other comments? Meeting met?
We don't have four people who are at all these meetings here now.
Well, that's right, too.
Push them off, push them off the next one.
Yeah, yeah, hold on.
All right.
Board of Appeals, well, you sent it to us, Kathy.
I send whatever I beget to you guys via email.
Committee updates from board members. Any updates?
Yeah, I've got a couple items. One has to do with, and this was posted through, through Housing, the cleanup from the tornado damage is still available, there are some funds available, and until the end of December. And anyone seeking any information or any relief because of the damage should, should check in with Mary Wagon in, in Housing. Second item, also with, with Mary, the Ready Renters Lottery is scheduled for tomorrow at 1:00 PM here in this room, and she says there's, there's 170 applicants for, for the lottery. And her second question is, would any of you like to come and help draw the numbers out of the hat? So you can volunteer if you, if you wish. The, the last item I have is an item that was put forth at Housing concerning 75...
Meadowbrook.
There's, there's two very good reasons about this, that underlie this particular project. One, the, the house that's abutting Swan Pond, with the improvement of Parker River Bridge, the expected rise in pond level due to high tide is going to further inundate that property, and it's, and, and so it makes it less, less tenable, it'll, it'll flood the garage that's underneath, underneath the house. So the, the concept is to remove that, so that's one very good objective. The second part of the proposal is to move that house to another lot off of Winslow Gray and, Winslow Gray and the corner of Wedgmere Road, and the, by moving the house to, to the Wedgmere address, it would be made available for...
Veterans housing.
Veterans housing.
Veterans. Looking for a word there. For veterans. I, that too is a worthy objective, but from the, from my point of view on, on the, on the zoning side of things, I think, while, while the zoning bylaws will allow it, it's going to be a, crowding a fairly large house, 48 by 24, on a 50 by 100 lot, and it's, it's gonna make a very crowded aspect. Personally, I would like to encourage that they find another lot to put the house that they move. The objective of veterans housing is, is wonderful, but I think, I think the, personally, I think the, the lot that they want to move it to is, is just too small, because they're not gonna change the, the rest of the, of the property, and zoning setback issues are a major element there. So that's, the, the object, the, the two objectives are good, move a house out of the flood, provide veterans housing, yeah, fine, but I think, I think that should be still given some more, more review, the, the second part. That's about all I have.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just the, on the Water Resources Advisory Committee, several members of the committee are preparing to make a presentation to the selectmen, bringing them up to date on what we've done most currently, and probably answer some more questions that they may have, what we're, what our thinking is as far as financing and timing and so forth. So we're just moving right along.
Okay.
And of course, it's, it's incumbent on the, the selectmen need to make a decision by, before the end of the year, as far as the DHY situation is concerned, whether they're gonna recommend that we join that or do something else. And that will be on the town meeting, annual town meeting next year.
Next, Lee. The Drive-In Site Utilization Committee met, what, two weeks ago?
Sure. That just seems like a month and a half ago.
One long day.
Right.
I know, and I know, and talked about submitting an application to CPC Committee for 1.5 million to subordinate the funds that they had received originally from this May town meeting, which was 2.2 million, bringing it up to 3.7. And the thought process behind it was that with that higher number, it gives a greater possibility for getting both state and federal grants at high numbers as well. So with that 3.7, we're talking, we were talking about planning and permitting and a percentage of construction being completed.
Right, that would pay for 100% of design and permitting, and then 50% of the construction. We have applied for a land and water conservation grant, which looks promising for almost a million dollars. Some of the CPA funds might not just go to matching funds, but also there might be certain components of the project that might be harder to fund. The, the boardwalk itself is in a particular zone where federal funding would not be allowed to build anything in there, so some CPA funds may need to go to that, or we may need to find some state funding, different types. Each grant opportunity comes with its own restrictions and what it's eligible for, so you're kind of layering things, and parts of the project are good for this but not good for that, and trying to figure out where we go from there. But I think we're concentrating on getting a consultant on board for design and permitting before the beginning of the year, and then hopefully we'll know about that grant. The grant would pay for $204,000 of the design and permitting, leaving that CPA money to go towards construction. So we, but it's reimbursement, so you can't spend it now and ask for the money later, we gotta wait for the award. So hopefully by the beginning of the year, we'll know more about that.
Very good. Board member items?
Yeah, yesterday, I and Kathy and, and others attended the Smart Growth America meeting, this, this talking about form-based zoning issues. This was, this is, this is the second of the, of the two meetings, and it was, it was very well, it was, it was, it was a good, open discussion of a lot of items that we will probably be facing down in the, in the future. And it all comes down to, if we're gonna make any progress on, on form-based zoning, the sewer program is the key to everything. But the, but the options that the Opportunity Zone gives us, basically from Parker River to Bass River, throughout that whole area in Precinct One, is, it's, it's gonna be challenging for us, and it's gonna be rewarding, I think, for the, for the community as well. But it's, it was a good meeting, and we should have more discussions like that down in the future, and more people to attend.
They're gonna work up a draft report, they kind of did identify some next steps, which I thought was great. I agree with everything Tom said, I thought it was a very good, open, honest discussion on where we are and what we can do, what's realistic. I think it's very easy to be academic and say, we'd like to see Yarmouth look like this, but we all know that Yarmouth isn't gonna be Chatham, it's gonna be a little bit different, and what can we get the community to rally around, so that's important. But really kind of working with Lou Nicconello's diff and him moving forward with trying to just talk to the different business owners if that passes at, at special town meeting, and starting to see what development people would really like to see, and get some numbers down for, for potential redevelopment. That will help us get an idea of the new growth revenue that might be generated, even though it's a small area. Rich Bianovu's cost recovery really doesn't even include new growth revenue, he's showing it being paid for a lot of different ways. So that would be great to show that, okay, we have this pent-up demand just in this little area, and it's done based on an analysis that Lou's gonna be working on. The Board of Selectmen need to make some determination, as well as the town, of whether we're gonna go with DHY or Yarmouth and move forward with our wastewater. They also wanted to, and this is something that we're gonna be discussing probably in our first meeting in December, is some visioning for the town. I think we've talked about it a little bit, one of the start, starting aspects of getting a certified local comprehensive plan is to do that initial visioning. I think we've been very lucky and had a very active community, and we have a lot of good input and a lot of studies and a lot of public meetings that we've had already, so I think we're kind of looking at maybe developing some general ideas for people to, to look at versus a general visioning of what do you think, what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses, more along the lines of this is what we're doing for our affordable housing, are you interested in, in us continuing with this? These are some of our success stories, are you happy with that? Where would you like to see the affordable housing? Would you like to see it in multifamily? Would you like to see it around town? And get that type of input, and maybe even combine that with some type of onsite, online surveys. So we are currently on the draft agenda for the Board of Selectmen to talk about that on December 10th, so we'd like to have a discussion with the planning board ahead of that. Karen and I need to get together and talk about it. Karen and I need to get together and talk about it a little bit more, and kind of present that to you. But that's something that's coming down the line. And then getting that certified LCP, which would allow us to start looking at whether it's some type of growth incentive zone or Chapter H that would reduce those thresholds for the DRIs for the Cape Cod Commission. Obviously, you need to have the infrastructure, and the biggest thing they don't have is wastewater. All of the recommendations they started on really had to do, let's move forward with our wastewater, because that was, as Tom mentioned, the biggest deterrent for us moving forward.
The key that unlocks the door.
It really is. And then we can start looking at how our zoning and the GIS all kind of work together, and what we might be able to do with that.
Correspondence, staff update?
I was gonna talk about the ASB. I'm glad Tom brought that up. I just wanted to let people know that we do have an online permitting guide for small businesses now. It was presented to the Board of Selectmen at their meeting on October 8th. So, if you go on our town website, there's a nice little news item there, and click on that. There's a lot of hyperlinks leading people to places within our website that I don't think were always easy to get to or navigate, so it's, it's a little bit cleaner. And it also, the first thing it has is, you know, people to know and places to go. Who are the important people, the key, key contacts that you might need to, to talk to at town hall to help you along? Obviously, community development and the building department and the health department are one of the main, main departments that really help move development along and can help guide people on where to go after that. So, take a look at it. The Board of Selectmen were generally favorable. I think they really wanted to see some flow charts to make it more of a one-page, a little readable. Easier said than done, but that's certainly something that staff is gonna be looking at in the future. And I was gonna mention that Yankee Village was demolished.
Went by yesterday and had half of it down.
It was like two days, and it was down. I think it was made out of toothpicks.
Didn't get a chance to get by there yet, but I was very thrilled to see a backhoe sitting next to Parker's River Bridge. With the engine running, and there was work going on, so that's, that's really nice to see.
That's huge. Hopefully, people will have patience with that as we move forward.
Okay, upcoming meetings. We have October 22nd, Board of Selectmen, and October 29th, Special Town Meeting. And then we have November 6th, which is scheduled, first meeting in the month. Item 12.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.